With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yes, Julia will join us directly. But why don't you go ahead and start with the roll call, Jared Lemon. We'll hold on to Julia until she gets here.
Mr. Epper?
Here.
Tammy Blaine?
Here.
Cindy Brode?
Here.
Mr. Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kirk? Dr. Riggs?
Here.
Dr. Shaffer?
Here.
Mr. Schur?
Here.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out to our, our meeting tonight. I do not have a board president message. Do we have anybody that's signed up? Everybody signed up for public comment? IAEA, ASG, SGA, or STUKA? Anyone here from those organizations? Nothing heard. Superintendent's report. Rob, it's your turn.
I just wanted to update the board briefly on a few of the trainings that we've attended. We have the principals and the administrative team have been part of work. We went to a inter-district training on principal scenarios last week and a safety training for reunification the week before that, which was also in the district live. They were both very beneficial and we'll have more to come back with on that. Also, real quick on our Avery Schneider. Avery just continues to impress. Not only is he a national champion, now he's been invited to compete on the global. So he is going to be participating in the, I guess it's the North American competition. So he'll be competing against students from other countries here very soon with his invention. So we're very proud of Avery.
That's very good. Okay. No solicitors report tonight. No presentations. We're down to the approval of the minutes and the agenda. So moved second. Okay, moved in second. On 3.2, sir, we do have an addendum tonight. So we will need a motion to approve the addendum to the agenda.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor of? Do we have any discussion on the addendum?
I just want to mention that Act 65 asks that we keep the agenda the same after it's posted. You're only allowed to make changes when there are certain situations. Those situations include situations where an untimely event occurs or if there's something that is emergent in nature. We were at a meeting today where some information came to light that we, the board needs to act on urgently. So we will not be able to take advantage of a situation if we do not act tonight. Therefore, this is an allowable addendum under the sunshine law. We do have to allow for public comment on this. What this pertains to is there is an opportunity to take advantage of some grant money that the grant closes on June 30th. So there is some material for the, our work with the NTSS program at the junior high that we were going to bring to you guys in August probably to approve, for purchase. If we order those supplies now, there are monies available from the state that we might be able to take advantage of, which would save the district approximately $28,000. So that's the emergency. That's why it's on the agenda tonight. There is no guarantee of that money. It's just an opportunity. If we cannot cover the cost of all of those funds through the grant, then we'll defer to Plan B, which was simply Essers money in the fall to pay for it anyway. So.
And to be clear, these are grants that are already in position for. So this is extending, extending our grant opportunity for the same reason.
Yes, sir. This is the comprehensive support grant from PTAAN that we were approved for last year.
And the other comment I'd like to make is that if we do get the grant, the $27,000 in Essers savings or funds then that could be spent on something else Essers related.
Yes, sir.
So it'll help us in some of our other programming if we're able to use these funds from this grant.
It's a tremendous opportunity. That's why we brought it to you tonight. Too good to pass up.
Is there any public comment on the addendum to the agenda? Nothing heard. All those in favor of adding this to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the addendum or the agenda has been amended. And now we're down to approving the minutes and the amended agenda. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. We do not have an ICTC meeting till tomorrow, so I have no report. Sue, did you have anything going on over there?
Yes, we met on June 20th. We elected officers, President Dr. Frank Przanica from Freeport, Vice President Mr. Charles Glasser from Marion Center, Secretary Ms. Danielle Patterson from Aaron IU 28, Treasurer Ms. Amanda Prusilhovic from Aaron IU 28. We approved the Executive Director, Dr. Bridget Mattson's salary. We reappointed Tucker Aronsberg as a solicitor, accepted resignations, employed a special education supervisor, one paraprofessional, and then the summer program staff. We also approved ESY teachers and professionals and the community service program staff. Two teachers were awarded tenure. There were several agreements and contracts approved. We approved the purchase of a new vehicle and the revised budgets for transportation and grants.
Very good, Sue. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tammy, outreach.
We did not have a meeting yet, but I did notice that the Aaron, I mean that the Indiana Area School District YouTube page has this playlist. So anybody who wants to, you know, find out what goes on the agenda, the agendas and the committee meetings will find it a lot faster and a lot easier.
Very good. Tom, looks like we're down to academic and extracurricular.
Rob, we didn't have, you didn't have a committee?
We have not had a meeting since then, no.
Okay, so we can go straight to the motions?
Yes, sir.
So 5.2 is the SAP agreement as written. I move that we approve. I move we do 5.2 and 5.3 as consent and injection. I move that we approve 5.2 SAP agreement and 5.3 IU 28's theme lending library participation as written.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Just briefly, sir, these are standard approvals that we do each and every year. One of them is a partnership with the Armstrong Indiana Clarion Drug and Alcohol Commission that help us with our SAP team execution, which is a student assistance program. And then the IU theme lending library is a small fee that we pay each year to share resources that the Aaron IU, they have all these gadgets and gizmos that they keep and our teachers in the theme areas can use those in instruction on like borrowing from a library.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of 5.2 and 5.3, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried.
Okay, 5.4, purchase of reading and math interventions, which we previously discussed. Can I make that motion?
Second.
Okay, you want to go over that? I do want to go over that if I may. So as you know, the junior high team has been hard at work trying to install a multitude system of support there, which is overhauling the schedule. We've come back to you a few times with some requests and we've always gotten your support. Part of this includes intervention programs. And what an intervention program is, if the students don't get it the first time in their regular class, what we call tier one, we need a tier two support. Another approach to try to get those students back up to speed before they end up in special education. And so we always like to use evidence-based programs for those interventions. And what the team has been doing is they've been going through different options, reviewing those options, trying to figure out what is best for those interventions in both math and reading. The good news is, is that we've been down this road before. So all of these, all of these programs except one are programs that we already have in play in our district somewhere and have already produced results for us. So things like spring math, which has done a tremendous job. We've seen tremendous growth and I'll be reporting up on PSSA results that are coming in currently, but we've seen an increase in math scores across the board. So yes, and we attribute a lot of that to spring math. Our rewards program, which the board approved about four years ago as an intervention at the four, five buildings, now will be an appropriate intervention at the junior high. Step up to writing, which is a writing process that we approved at the last board meeting. The same work that those elementary teachers did to find a writing process that makes sense. The junior high teachers did similar work and they came to the same conclusion. The step up to writing was one of those, one of those programs that they wanted to implement. So for continuity's sake, it makes sense. The other one is the 95% group vocabulary search, which is already an approved program. It's another intervention, evidence-based, 95% group is getting a lot of steam, a lot of research behind them that says it's very, very effective. And that obviously is an intervention to work on improving students' vocabulary. And then there's a CKLA component. The ELA teachers at the secondary want to run CKLA in one of the courses in each, in almost like a pilot, just like we did with the elementary to see if that, if it's going to be effective again for continuity's sake. So there's a cost for that too. The only program that we have not used is called SRA, which is corrective reading, is an evidence-based program. It has a lot of research behind it. It comes recommended by our friends, our experts from across the state. And that is a $6,000 lower cost for that. So all told, all of these programs, if we were to buy them all for the junior high would be $28,300. And again, if we act now or order those before Friday, we can get that paid for through this comprehensive grant. If we wait till after July 1st, there's nothing to do with that money.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion from the board on 5.4? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now Cindy, it's your turn.
Okay, we have not had a policy and personnel committee meeting since the last board meeting. And I've got a bunch of motions I would like to take as consent. 6.2 is the new substitute list for custodians. 6.3 is approval of some board policies that deal with data security. 6.4 is employment of support staff that we would be employing Julie Burnettto as a para educator. 6.5 is a long-term substitute assignment that we would be employing Hillary Hubbard as a long-term family and consumer science teacher at the junior high. 6.6 is a whole slew of extracurricular positions and spring coach positions. The list will be provided for the, for the press afterwards. And that's it. So 6.2 through 6.6, I'd like to take as consent.
Okay, moved in second on 6.2 through 6.7. Questions, comments, or discussion?
6.6.
I'm sorry, 6.6. Anything you want to comment on?
Let me see here. Yeah, shared to mention the board policies are about data security and notification. The year-round positions are all repeat positions. They are people who held us positions last year and did a fine job for us. So there are no new hires on that list. I think that's it.
Okay, any other questions, comments on 6.2 through 6.6? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Carrie's not here. Tom or Lon, do you guys want to, one of you want to cover buildings and grounds?
Well, we had a, we had a meeting this afternoon reviewing the Eisenhower plans entirely for almost two hours, getting ready for the, we had the 95% drawings and we went over them relatively carefully. So that's moving ahead. That was the, that was a committee report. So we have 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5. The, I can take those together? 7.4 is, the blank should be public address system for Ben Franklin at an estimated cost of $150,000. That's a public address system, clock system. Modernizing what they don't have there now. The change orders for $10,000 to what we're working on in the original, what used to be the administrative offices at East Pike.
But I, I think it's kind of a blanket order, Tom, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes, yes. You're correct. We're authorizing Chaney and Jared to authorize change orders at the $10,000 on those two. So I like the motion 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5 as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Julia?
I'm pleased with 7.4 that we'll be investing some money in Ben Franklin. I think it'll be a good, good step forward for us.
Yes, agreed.
Just an update on the vape detectors. Those are through the Adagio Health Grant that we worked with in the past. And we're going to, basically that, we're getting $51,000 worth of equipment for absolutely free for the participation with that organization. And it's worth mentioning, sir, that the $23,000 estimate for installation, a large portion of that would be paid for with the jewel settlement money from that lawsuit.
Okay, very good. Any other questions?
To be clear, these are, these are detectors that are located in spaces where people have been vaping around, around, around the district.
Yes, sir. I mean vaping is an epidemic across the nation, especially with our tweens and teens. So the junior high and senior high, these will be installed in all the laboratories and locker rooms so that if students are in there vaping, it will not only sound, it'll send a silent alarm to the principals who know to respond and which have to respond so that they can teach the children better.
And, and the only thing that I would like to add to that is that the vaping is not the same as the smoking was in my day and that there are significantly greater health risks and hazards. Plus, there are some substances that could be put in the vape that we would not consider appropriate over the boat tobacco.
Correct. And this can test, this can detect THC that is used in those vapes. So if someone had to vape with illegal drugs in it, we will be able to detect that. The other nice thing, sir, is that it actually detects loud noises. So if there was ever a fight in a bathroom or if someone had a medical emergency, we would just cry out. The principals would know about that. So they would know to respond. So it's an added safety feature as well.
Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on 7.3 through 7.5? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Julia? Big one for tonight.
Yeah, we have a, we have a prize tonight. The Audit and Finance Committee did meet tonight before our executive session. And the discussion centered around a couple of things. One is, it seems to be the consensus of the board that we're going to go ahead with our copying machine contract and we are pleased that we're going to, and put in the motion a local contractor tonight. There will be two abstentions because we deal with that company, Tom Harley and I, and like their service. And however, because we have contracts, we're not going to vote. On the, the other thing is we're going to have, there's a motion tonight on the insurance. And you can see on the table what each portion will cost the district. We, it's about $15,000 more overall than what it was in the past. Is that correct, Jared? Overall?
Throughout all the different types of insurance.
Throughout all the different types, all right. And we, we are not obligated to, to, we can always leave the, the contracts at any time, correct?
Yes, we've noticed, yeah, we can, we can change insurances if we need to.
Yeah, so we're going to probably look at even brokerage contracts in the next year or so. So we'll get to that. The, the big thing that we talked about was the tax situation. It appears that the board is still in favor of raising our taxes by a assessed rate of 15.67 mils. That amounts to about a 2% increase. The Chair of the Board has, the Mr. President has also indicated that if we do that, we have to figure out how to reduce our expenses by a similar amount, if not more. And at the last prior meeting we had, we talked about looking at our total investments in the district and reallocating them so that we can come up with some sensible savings without cutting into any kind of muscle. So that's going to be a big project. We expect to hear back from the administrators probably Thanksgiving or early December.
Probably for them, some maybe as early as August.
Some, some could be coming along quite early, yes. So we're hopeful that we can do this. We certainly appreciate the district taxpayers for being so loyal to us and supportive of this district. So Jared has pointed out that there's the homestead, farmstead rules. And there's a formula for determining, we figured this would be for the average household, about a $49 increase a year, about $50. And Jared, you want to explain how that formula works?
Yeah, we take every year part of the homestead, farmstead program. The county shares with me, everybody who's enrolled. And in order to enroll in the program, you have to be a property owner within the district and it has to be your primary residence. We're not talking about businesses. We're not talking about rental properties. We're strictly talking about homes that have, or act as a primary residence for the owner. So the average property within that list of over 5,000 properties that I get is right around $160,000 is the average assessed value. So taking that times the increase is how I come up with the average is around $50 for the average homeowner.
Okay, thank you. So we have a number of motions. What I'd like to do is take 8.2, the adoption of the budget, out separately. 8.3, I think we can do as a consent item. That's relatively routine. 8.4 is the homestead, farmstead resolution and then the insurance renewal. And finally, I'll take out 8.6 because Cindy's going to read that motion. So if I could have?
Excuse me, 8.5, I'm going to have to abstain also.
Okay.
You can, you can do it as consent, but I need to abstain.
Okay, so those, and then I'm taking out.
Okay, so 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5 will take as consent. And then Tom may have to abstain at 8.5.
Correct.
Is there, Julia's made the motion on those three. We have a second. Okay, is there any questions, discussion, or comments on those three motions? You really? We're doing it backwards because we should have done 8.2 first, but that's okay.
If 8.2 does not pass, then 8.4 cannot happen.
All right, then I'm going to move that 8.2, the adoption of the budget. I'm going to read it into the records submitted for the board's consideration as a following motion to adopt the 2324 general budget. Resolve that the Indiana, resolve that the budget of the IASD hereby is finally adopted as the annual budget of the sub-district for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2023 and ending on June 30th, 2024 in the total amount of $64,683,900. Be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the IASD authorize and appropriate the expenditure of funds as itemized in said budget during the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. The necess, is that correct? Yeah. The necessary revenue for meeting the budgetary requirements shall be provided by the following taxes. A, 0.75 tax on earned income, earned income received and net profits earned during the period beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024 upon the residents of our school district. This tax continues in force and effect from year to year without annual reenactment. B, a 0.5% tax on the transfer of real property effective January 1st of 1977 and revised March 10th, 1987 upon real property transferred within the IASD. This tax continues in full first, force and effect from year to year without annual reenactment. Finally, C, a tax on real estate, which is hereby levied and assessed at a rate of 15.67 mils on the dollar on the total amount of the assessed value of all real estate taxable for school purpose in the Indiana Area School District or at the rate of $1.567 on each $100 of assessed evaluation.
Second on the?
I'll second.
8.2? Okay, so we're going to deal with 8.2 exclusively first. Questions, comments, or discussion on 8.2?
I want to say I'm not going to approve this. I'm going to vote no. And I'm going to vote no for a reason that seems counterintuitive, but I do not think that this tax increase is sufficiently high enough to help the district out of the financial dilemma that we're in. We're at the point now where we're, we're looking at cutting positions, cutting programs, cutting things that are going to affect the education of the students. We needed to have, we should have had a tax increase a couple of years ago. We needed to have it last year and we have to have it this year. But I just don't think this has gone far enough. So it might be a protest vote that doesn't really count for anything, but I need to vote no.
Okay, thanks. Jim, go ahead.
I'm going to vote no for the intuitive reason. Consistent with my position before, I, in a budget of $64 million, I don't think it's fair to lump that on the residents of this school district. There's a lot of poverty before and then worse after COVID. It's, to me, even if it mathematically works out to an average of $49 a year for the average household, what about the ones that make up the low end of that average? Couple bucks a month makes a huge difference. And I, I just, to be fiscally responsible with other people's money, I'm not going to ask them more. I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Ron?
I just want to say I'm supportive of this and there's a reason. As you know, I won't be running again for board, but I can't see us leaving whoever comes on the board straddled with these debts that we have to take care of. It's a very modest increase. I think this board has done a great job on saving money. We do have money, but we also have a school to build and schools to maintain. The cost has gone up on everything. I mean, food, clothing, transportation has just increased crazy. Even our insurance has gone up this year on the school district. So it's gone up $15,000. So there's no way with our revenue going down that we can't raise, can't afford to raise the taxes. Revenue going down in this area is because there's no new jobs coming in here and people are moving out. And if you look at how many homes are up for sale in Indiana County right now and in our borough right now for sale, we're losing tax revenues. We have to do something. If we're going to maintain our schools, we're going to have to raise these taxes. I don't think anybody here really wants to, but it's a necessity. And I agree with you, Cindy, it's not enough, but we've got to take some steps to move forward right now. And I agree with Jim too. I know there's a lot of poverty here, but a lot of the people we're talking about too aren't the ones paying taxes in this school district. They're just not doing renting because they can't afford to. So I think we need to look at this and we need to raise these taxes. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I have to say I agree. And the population that doesn't, that can't afford this, they can't afford to have their education cut and positions being lost at the schools. Because who gets lost in those is the poor people. The people that don't have the resources to buy a tutor, that don't have the resources to reach out somewhere else or move somewhere else. They're stuck. So we have to do what we can.
That's it.
Anybody else?
I'd just say that I'm voting in favor for basically the same reasons. While I agree with Jim that there are people who can't afford it and I feel badly about that. I wish the board had raised taxes minimally earlier so that we would have had that income and growth. But I hear in every buildings and grounds meetings that our buildings are falling apart. Basically, they're falling apart and we have to, with Eisenhower being, we don't know how much that's going to end up costing in the long run. We have a number, but who knows how close we'll be on that. And all of our schools need attention. And I think our students in this district deserve to come to a decent building, a safe building for their education.
Okay. Julia, go ahead.
I don't disagree with any of the comments and I don't particularly want to, I don't particularly want to do this. I see it more as an abundance of caution rather than dire straits. We do have about $8 million in the general fund and that's a pretty good cushion for us. So we're not in, we're not in big trouble, but there have been some real stresses on the budget. One is safety and security, which is absolutely necessary. And we've all supported, supported the costs unanimously. But we also want to say tonight that we do think the state, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is going to have to come in and help us share these costs because security guards, all of the things that we've had to do recently come right out of our general fund right now. So it's, and the other thing I think that is crucial is that our cyber school costs have escalated this year. It's been a surprise to us. We didn't expect it to happen. And there's been an attempt in the state legislature to try to get this formula corrected because it's nearly doubled since, what, about 2018? Our costs have almost doubled in cyber school with about the same number of students. Our costs have almost doubled in cyber school with about the same number of students. So there's been some stresses on the budget, and that's where I'm coming from. I think 2% is modest, and I, I'm, I'm voting for it as an abundance of caution, but not because, because I'm worried about the general fund or anything else.
I'm gonna support the motion as, as written. It's, it's a small step to raise the taxes. At the same time, I definitely don't like to do that. I think their buildings, we've made a major improvement to our buildings seven, eight years ago with the ESCO and getting buildings autotight and safe and efficient. I don't think the buildings are unsafe. I think we juggle the capital expenditures prudently, doing what needs to be done, when it needs to be done. This district has made a commitment to the educators, that we pay our teachers at the, at the top of the list. And we have, and we, we have great teachers. The buildings, the buildings, we don't have the money to, to, to make show places. We have places for kids to learn. And we have programs that I'm proud to offer. I do believe that Julie, Julie hit the nail on the head with the community owes us security, yet we're spending over $500,000 in various security and plus security upgrades to our buildings. That is directly coming out of our tax, tax base. That's, you can refer that to five teachers that, that we don't have. We have, cyber schools have gone from 3/4 million dollars to 1.5 million for the same number of students over the last five years. We have no control to quality. That money comes right out of our back pocket. It goes into, into humongous capital reserve accounts that these cyber schools have. They have no quality control. They don't, they don't even get audited like we do. Those are huge problems. If it doubles again, you know, again, 1.5 million in cyber school money is 15 teachers. That's a whole elementary school that we, that we cannot provide our students. So this is a middle ground. I do not like raising the taxes. I don't like cutting the programs. I don't like having, having to delay things on the, on the capital, on the capital front. But we're, we're struggling through it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else again? So from my perspective, we've been looking at somewhere between $2 to $2.3 million in either increased expenses or decrease in our revenue that were effectively uncontrollable by the school board. I know Julia and Tom mentioned cyber school. There's $800,000 there that's changed in the last four or five years, whatever it's been. There's also the $500,000 in security. And theoretically, you could argue that we could control that, that $500,000 by not spending it on the various upgrades. But in today's world, effectively, that's off the table. You almost have to spend the money whether you want to or not. Those are the impacts that we've seen on the expense side of the equation. Where we've seen it on the revenue side is, as we all know, this community is hurting in part because of the reduction in the student body that's occurred at IUP in addition to changes in the way people shop. We, this past year or two, we had major reductions in the assessment for the mall as well as several housing projects that were primarily built to support the IUP community. Cumulatively, between all of those, it amounted to $1 million reduction in our direct revenue. So I, I don't remember what the assessed value was, but the assessed value was like 15 million or whatever it was that directly impacted $1 million coming into our revenue. That's a swing of 2.3 down to $2 million that we have to make up in some capacity. When I look at this, I'm looking at this more as a three-step approach to this. Number one, I agree with, with Jim and some of the others that say we really shouldn't put this all on the back of the taxpayers, and they're absolutely correct. Nor should we put it on the back of the students or our programming, and that is correct. And as Julia pointed out, we have an $8 million fund balance. So we have at least some cushion for this next year to see what happens. So I think the solution here is a three, this three-pronged approach. Number one, the administration is already working on a quarter of a million dollars in cuts that they're, they're trying to figure out. And there's some more that they're gonna possibly have for us in September or, as Julia said, perhaps as late as November. The impact will be, it will reduce the amount of our expenditures, which then affects directly the bottom line of our fund balance. With this tax increase, and we haven't done it for five or six years now, at 2% is relatively modest. So if we can make up some of this deficit with cuts and reduction, some of it with a small tax increase and the balance out of the fund balance, I think that's a fair equitable way to approach this problem where it, it doesn't impact any one group, but pretty much affects the entire community. But it's also fair from the perspective that the entire community has also provided, or particularly in the reassessment, have helped to put us in the box that we're in. So I'll vote for this based on the idea of approaching it from these three different directions. Any other questions or comments at this point? May I have a roll call?
Mr. Harhart?
Yes.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Brode?
No.
Julia Chamarkey-Cucuro?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Yes.
Dr. Rig?
Yes.
Dr. Schaefer?
No.
Mr. Schrober?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Six to zero.
Six to two.
(laughing)
My only closing comment is I wanna thank everybody. It's a hard decision anytime you're talking about raising taxes or making some additional cuts. And I thank you all for your diligence and, and your support in getting that done. Julia, there are some other motions.
Some more motions. So I think we can take 8.3, Tax Bill Deadlines, 8.4, Homestead/Farmstead Resolution, and Insurance on 8.5. And Cindy, we'll give the copier motion, so if we can go up to 8.5.
Second.
Okay, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5. Questions, comments, or discussion on those three motions?
The one thing I just did want, and I know there's a note on the agenda to mention, is that our deductible for package policy is going up from $25,000 to $50,000. And that was on recommendation of myself and Raskini based on a history of over 10 years of not having a claim that has ever reached $25,000. And now with inflation and everything else, even $50,000 is probably, if you're gonna have a major claim, something's gonna be over $50,000. But based on our history, other than the Eisenhower project itself or the Eisenhower fire, we have not had, we've had a very good claims history. So in order to save $11,000 a year, we've raised the deductible by $25,000, so.
Point well, well noted, Jared. Point well noted. And the fire was a one, you know, it's an...
Yes.
Extraordinary. Extraordinary, yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on 8.3 through 8.5? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. You abstain, yes, from...
It doesn't really matter.
Okay. All right, Cindy, 8.6.
8.6, Copier Lease Agreement. Based on the recommendation of the administration, the district enters into a four-year lease agreement with Henry Hall for the lease of 10 copiers, replacement of our current copiers, at an estimated monthly cost of $3,785.05.
Second. Oh, I can't even do that. Somebody...
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by people other than Julia and Tom. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion on the copier lease? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Abstentions.
Or motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to closing. We have no discussion items. 9.1, is there any public comment on 9.2 on agenda items? Yes, sir.
My name's Cam Berger, Berger Office Systems, local in Indiana for more than 34 years. I pay my taxes. I heard the conversation was much about finance. And the proposal presented to the board and to the business office was less expensive. It avoided any cost of returning the existing equipment with possibly around $3,000 or more. In addition, the proposal included $5,000 worth of printers that the, the IT would avoid buying in the future. The proposal also is not dictated by any volume increases, such that the, as just in, from the time from April to June, the average monthly volume had increased just based on the usage within the district. And I think those things are overlooked. And it was brought up last time that about Berger Office Systems not being local. Again, I've been here for 34 years, actually two years prior to that. And I think that by, in addition to that, you look at the history of supporting school districts. We got Marion Center, Homer Center, Aaron Intermediate Unit. I don't believe Henry Hall supports any school districts in the county. Penn's Manor also, you mentioned them as well. So I, I'm sorry to not supporting the district. I personally am here and supporting whenever Joanne, if the high school copier needs something. I'm very responsive. I'm here every day, most days, not every day during the week. So I think the public should be aware, the, the taxpayers should be aware that the district has chosen to spend more without a secure. And it also would be important to know in the billing that there were all flat-rate contracts through the state of Pennsylvania, both the Commonwealth Pennsylvania contract and the Peckham contract. So at that point, being a flat rate, the business office has to charge out to each of the buildings on the usage. And so the business office has to spend time doing that. So there's a cost internally to that versus over the next four years, it would be a consistent basis. So with that, I appreciate the time that you've given me to speak up. But I feel that there was some oversight on the decision that the board made.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, we had some enclosures. We also had an executive session this evening. Prior to the board meeting, we talked about personnel issues and some litigation matters dealing with the Ike Fire Settlement. And after the meeting tonight, we will have a safety briefing. We will not return for the press's benefit and the public's. We will not return to active session after our, our, our executive briefing here this evening. Our next board meeting will be July the 17th. That is a change from our public schedule. And next, there are no committee meetings in July. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Your, the July 10th meeting's canceled, and we're now doing that on the 17th.
The July 10th meeting is canceled, and we're now doing July the 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. May I now have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. And we'll begin, we'll begin the executive session here in a few minutes.